Our second, what, Perkey? All in favor, second, obviously.
Aye.
Any input? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmington with the Ohio Department of Transportation for construction of water facilities.
I move to spend the rules and regulations to give Resolution 2244, second, third reading by Tyler O'Malley.
Second motion, second for suspension of rules. Pro, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Motion, Harry, second, third reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Wilmington with the Ohio Department of Transportation for construction of water facilities.
I move to pass Resolution 2244 as read.
Second motion, second for passage. I'm sorry, it was the second.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2244 passes. Did you have anything else, Mr. President?
Um, nothing else, Mr. President.
Right. Under reports to counsel, you have the income tax report for September two thousand twenty-two and the auditors' report for August two thousand twenty-two. What is your pleasure?
Move they be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion, second to accept the reports as presented, all in favor, since I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any input? Reports are accepted. We now enter into the portion of meeting that's open to the public. Anyone that would like to come forward and talk with us for three minutes or less?
Three minutes or less.
We certainly appreciate your input. You'll come up here, sir, and give us your name and address.
Uh, Jason Stooks, been out repairing the, uh, me going in the corner of Sugar Tree in Mulberry. Our concern is, I've talked about this one from Sugar Tree quarter over there, is that speed coming down the hill. They blow that sign and they're also going through the bike path fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty mile an hour. This is a daily thing. I come down Nelson the other day with a new bike trail from Ogden. It's more nice, it's very pretty. They just want to do the same thing at the bike trail there. Maybe take our orange speedo thing, set it at the intersection, new stop signs, maybe this. Try and slow that area down, especially if it's only there in payment district or whatever. It's easy being district friendly without a racetrack.
Daisy, I have a question. Are you saying they're coming down the hill in Wilmington?
Yeah, up from there, and from Truesdale, so that's.
But there's stop signs, are they blowing stop signs?
Uh, about fifty percent of the time.
Are they?
Yeah, and some fast, especially on the side of, I mean.
Yeah.
We can with the side of that.
Yeah.
And we can, we can add extra enforcement.
Yeah, and we'll put our radar sign over there.
I'd agree. I'd agree, I must have been in that crosswalk before, so I had time to walk.
Yeah, we had Jason Stooks on the intersection, he got hurt bad, I mean, he gonna need that back again, so. Yeah, something stupid. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. We'll with the.
Would you like to address us, ma'am?
Yes.
If you want to come forward, give us your name and address. Give your comments, three minutes or less.
I'm Jane John. I have a residence out on Beach River, thirty-five, thirty-seven South Beach River. My concern is our crime and vagrancy here in Clinton County, but centering most here in downtown Wilmington area. I am all about beautifying Wilmington. I do the flags down Main Street for the football players, I created that program. I want pride, I want things here to be safe for our children. Right now, I am noticing a huge flaw. The flaw is that we have such a huge vagrant problem that our crime rate is skyrocketing since two thousand fourteen. I have done all the data, did Wilmington, Ohio, uh, crime data through the FBI. And in two thousand twenty-one, your chances of being affected by crime is one in thirty-three. I was kind of blown away at that, and then the FBI also said Wilmington, Ohio is not one of the safest communities in America. Another thing that blew me away, this is, you know, it used to be voted one of the best small towns in America. Best small town, was it nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-eight? And then it said nine, and relative to other towns in Ohio and cities, regardless of stocks, we are ninety-two percent higher in crimes than them. This needs to be addressed. So then I started going store to store and talking to business owners. Asking them, hey, you know, what's going on? No backpack signs on the back door, you know, in the front door of the store. They do not want these vagrants coming in because they're getting robbed. It's costing them a lot of money. They're linking it all to Sugar Tree. And I'm like, yeah, 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 okay, yes, it's pretty bad, but Sugar Tree was established to be a very good thing when the age of four now.
Sugar Tree Ministries is what you're referring to?
Yes, it is. So, I'm always beautifying, I don't know if you guys know, I cleaned up the Pocket Park. And when I did that, found heroin needles, turned them into the police department. I also, um, started, believe it or not, Cleanup Wilmington. I presented, I started it and then I presented it in advance. So I actually started this program. And as a matter of fact, there are people here that have helped out with Cleanup Wilmington. I cleaned up all of this, okay? All of this debris from around UDF, okay? I also found your heroin pipes. I also picked up the forks and silverware from Sugar Tree Ministries alone with your needles, okay? This is, this is just me, okay? I'm just one set of. You know what this is? This is a shake and bake bottle. You take a, a Gatorade bottle and you mix it and you shake it and it crystallizes and you smoke whatever it is. I don't even know what it's called, crack, meth, whatever it is, okay? This is shake and bake. How do I know it's coming in from all the vagrants and the problems that we're having over Sugar Tree? Because they leave their little Christian flyers along with their heroin needles and in the trash that I'm finding. I realized we have got a major, major problem. It was a Tuesday afternoon, I'm over here at the Wooden Moose buying a birthday gift. City Warhead owner says, oh my God, Jane, it's so bad here. She said, you ought to come here on a Thursday. Come here on a Thursday when my store is not open. I said, okay, I can do this. I walked from there and I went down, not walked, but I drove down to the dry cleaner, pick up my husband's dry cleaning. I hear a fight break out in front of two oh five, which is right across the street from Main Street, right across from Sugar Tree Ministries. I watch a boy by the name Austin Martin, who is a very well-known thief and, and problem to the police department here, physically get picked up by a guy in two oh five, which is a sleeping house that Sugar Tree has, and tossed him in front of an oncoming car. The car had to come to a sliding hall. You can ask the lady from the, uh, dry cleaner that works there, she will testify that this is the truth. I really thought I saw a dead man that day. I realized that day, this, this is it. This is a Wednesday, oh my God, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna come down here and I'm gonna sit here on a Thursday and see how bad this really is because everyone's telling me how bad it is. So I did, but I didn't do it as a typical citizen. I want to know exactly what's going on with Sugar Tree Ministries. Do you know who this is? This is me. I dressed up as a vagrant and I walked with them. I integrated and I went into tank camps, okay? You know where this tank camp was located? Right across the street from Buckley Brothers, okay? This is infuriating. I could have bought any drug I wanted that day, except for, you know what the problem is? I don't know what they, what they call drugs, you know? I don't even have a clue, okay? I followed them. I walked with them. I followed them up to where Master Female is. They have a path ward to a blue house on the end of Truesdale that is the major drug house. Major, huge. I can get anything I want there. You also take your stolen goods there, okay? They're not too shy, you look like one of them. All you gotta do is just look like them. While I'm down there, I guess they have limited hours in which you can be in two oh five, right? So they have to camp out across the yard, all right? They're camping out all over the yard because you can only be inside the building for so long. While I'm undercover, I'm watching bicycles get stolen, okay? Bicycles from children. We're affecting our children here. Our children don't have anywhere to go or anything to appreciate because now, you ask Dr. Manzer, which I have, he, he's treating children that are picking up needles and being stuck. They're being stuck in our hearts, okay? This is a problem and nobody's addressing it. Here is the day, and I'm pat- patroned, if you'd like to see the video. I don't know how God let me pull the video, my phone out fast enough. But this is Austin Martin, and this is the guy that threw him out in front of this white car, okay? I was thinking, if that guy's injured, do I give him CPR? He's a crackhead, he's a nut head, he's a thief, I don't know what disease it is. I'm a compassionate human being, I'm not gonna let anyone die. And you guys are not doing anything to make this better, okay? I love all people. I had gone, in two thousand twenty, there was a group of us that started and we formed a committee and we wanted to present it to Lee Sandlin. Lee, we're seeing all these issues, guys. What, what, what are you doing to make this better? Lee wouldn't come to the meeting, he was intimidated by the people there, so he sent a little puppet. I'm in the meeting, I'll then I'll throw the name out, I hope he doesn't mind. But Larry Roberts was there, and Larry was very kind to the guy and he said, hey, I know you're running this whole step program here. What's your success rate? Twenty, thirty, forty percent? How, how's that working for you? Guy kind of dropped his head, couldn't answer anything, and Larry goes, come on, give me, give me a number. Guy mumbles under his breath, less than one percent. That's a problem, okay? Your taxi cab drivers, you're gonna lose one of your taxi cab drivers. They're gonna get hurt, they're gonna get killed. And I'm warning you right now. There was a guy by the name of Bill Evans that I've become friends with, he has since moved to Florida. He was one of the taxi cab drivers. He told me, Jane, we have vouchers, I guess back eighty-six percent of the vouchers come from Sugar Tree Ministries. I drive people from drug house to drug house, they lay the money out of the backseat and, and they come in and I have to drive them next one. I'm helping them, but I can't ask questions. Your, your business people in town? They are so upset because they're afraid to speak out. I'm not afraid to speak out, okay? They're afraid to speak out, why? They're afraid that they're gonna be looked at as un-Christian like, that they're, they're afraid their businesses are gonna be damaged, all right? We all know this. People don't like to play fair when they're under investigation, are they? Okay? So, but here I am, I am speaking on behalf of all the business owners here in Wilmington, Ohio that, that are being hurt. They're, they're scared, they're scared, guys. You get out there, you all get out there and you go up there and you ask them, what's your biggest problem? And they're gonna say vagrancy. Someone told me at the dry cleaner that our vagrancy problem is up to five hundred and thirty-two vagrants. Homeless, the homeless, the Gallup Street homeless place, they're the ones that did the survey. Now we got these, these phones out here that are being given away. The day I went up and talked to the guy sitting there smoking pot while selling phones or giving away the, I call them Obama phones, I don't know what they're calling them now, giving them away. Smoking pot through one of those gaspens, I'm like, oh, come on, like, I don't smell that, okay? I'm not stupid, okay? I'm compassionate. I don't know what's going on, but I'll tell you what, God is growing crime out in front of me. I don't look for crime, crime finds me. Do you know what I saw happen the other day? And I posted it on Facebook and I'm sure some of you guys know who I am. I watched a video of a guy taking a whiz against the sleep house, okay? Sitting there, whizzing, and I asked, you, you peed? Sure enough? Okay? What I want to share with you also is the fact that we have to be concerned with the fact that these hot meals are being served in styrofoam containers. Well, you can't see it here, but they're styrofoam containers, okay? How, how, how do you know that came from Sugar Tree Ministries? Here, here's a styrofoam container. I went to Sugar Tree Ministries Facebook page, sure enough, well, these styrofoam containers match, okay? There's no wigging, but when I was there in the tent camp hanging out with these people that are so wigged out of their brain that I pretended that I'm wiggling out of my brain too because I don't even understand them, there's, you know, so I just, you know, just sketch it too. I don't know how well I did, but they didn't bother me. But they are bothering our town. They're bothering our town. And if you guys don't control the fact that Sugar Tree Ministries is going to our jails and bringing these people back, and if you don't believe that to be true, I think you better start investigating. Because I'm gonna keep investigating. I'm not giving up on this city like I feel that everyone else has, okay? I'm stuck here in this city, my husband built a beautiful house, okay? We're not giving up on it. But if I could pick up my whole plot of land and move somewhere else, I would be out of this town. I don't have that option, okay? I came from Cincinnati originally. This stuff didn't fly from the Anderson township down there, okay? Y'all get together and start enforcing your ordinances. Your ordinances are important, they're there for our safety. Safety is key and number one in this city. We should be taking care of those children. The children in this town are the most important people anywhere. Because they are the ones coming up. They're the ones who are gonna take care of us when we're too old and feeble.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak.
Is this the same topic?
No, sir.
Okay. Oh, of course, uh, we lose, per turn of thought. Do we have any discussion from administration at this point or? Yes, sir. Michael?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, full disclosure, I'm president of the board of Sugar Tree Ministries and I would be happy to set up a meeting with Lee and anybody else in the room to have a conversation about some of these things, see sort of what you're suggesting be done. I'd like to hear.
I, I think, I think, I would like to see as many people as possible in on that meeting. I don't know how we can do it, I don't want it to be an attacking thing on Lee. But when you ask Lee, and, and, and I swear on this, when you ask Lee how he's gonna address these issues, do you know what the response is that you get? All the good that he's doing for this town. But what about the good people in this town that work really hard and parked their car in the driveway and now their Cadillac converters being cut off, okay? This is an issue. You guys can beautify Wilmington all you want, but people aren't gonna move here with that kind of crime rate. We're gonna lose this town.
Amen, absolutely, amen.
Yes.
Already losing it.
There's, there was a city cop that, that hit, that responded to a, sorry, chief, that responded to an accident where the, uh, a realtor was working with, a realtor friend of mine. The city cop actually told the guy, don't move here. And he, the realtor lost five hundred thousand dollars. He changed his mind, he said, I'm not moving here.
All you guys do is look at the crime, just do it, go home and Google it, guys.
I mean, I personally put my kids in Clinton Massey.
Me too.
Because I don't want my kids being around other kids who are getting drugs off of the street. So I don't want my kids here. My kids have seen people shoot up, my kids have seen people breaking into things. Everybody knows where I live, I live right in the middle of town. Yeah, it's my bad for living in the middle of town. But you can't expect our kids to feel safe in this town, period. My, my daughter, who is fourteen, is not gonna walk the dogs because she's afraid of what's gonna happen. We gotta change something, guys, like seriously.
Thank you. Very much. Thank you, Michael. Yes, ma'am. All right, is this Diane, is this the same topic?
Um, similar.
Well, this gentleman was ahead of you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This cheeky girl, ladies first.
Well, I gave him.
Oh, sorry.
You want?
I am here for, for Piny Lane. Um, kind of, I'm piggyback on that. I've lived in five cities over my lifetime, there's sixty-nine years. And you, you touched on something, Mayor, that, as Mayor, I'm noticing so much blight in this town. I've never lived in a city, you brought up something that I find curious, that if your code enforcement person doesn't go out and inspect the city and find you, so if we're expected to call it in, I've never lived in a city where the code enforcement wasn't proactive. What, I mean, what does, what does that person do if they're not out there looking for things that are not right?
The majority of the time is spent on paperwork.
On paperwork?
File complaints.
But then why is it up to, I, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just trying to ask.
Sets our eyes.
I just don't understand why it's expected for us to call something in for code enforcement when code enforcement, you should have enough code enforcement personnel to be out there looking at, finding on their own. I've never lived in a city, they didn't have code enforcement that was out there proactively. I just find it odd.
Well, I'd be lucky to hire another person and then have a long-term fixed cost.
I understand it's costly, but couldn't they find time to do their paperwork and be out in the streets as well? I mean, I walk, I live down, I, I lived in Franklin County for thirty-eight years and then came back to Wilmington two years ago. And I'm disappointed in what I'm seeing, but I love my hometown, that's why I talk my native Columbus husband in here. And another thing we had in Franklin County that they put in force that really helped a lot was an environmental court. So you handle the blights, you did so much, um, warning and talking to the homeowner or the absentee landlord or whatever, and after so long, if nothing was done, they went to environmental court. Then they decided if you find or if you in the city acquired your property or whatever, maybe we need, maybe we need an environmental court. But I just, I'm just really disappointed that we don't have code enforcement that actually is out there looking around and seeing what the problem is, it shouldn't be up to us to call it in. That's all I have to say, thanks.
I think she's out on the streets quite a bit, Diane.
Can I, can I speak?
I, I've still got this gentleman up here.
I was actually gonna piggyback off what she was talking about.
She wants to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. No, no, that's, they ain't ladies first.
I personally know you.
You wanna come out with an introduction or something?
My name's Leah Lorenz, I live at one eighteen South Mulberry Street. Um, Anna is overwhelmed, she's totally overwhelmed. A lot of it has to do with the vacancy and homeless issue that we have. She was cleaning up a lot of that. So I think if we can take that off of her plate, she can fix the violations that you need done because she's not worrying about what these other people are doing to our town. That's my personal opinion, honestly, so.
Thank you. As, as we enter budget season, maybe we ought to look at that to see what the cost would be and then we can, you know, use discretionary from there.
I concur.
I go.
Go ahead, Nick.
Can I, uh, hey, do this chief, can I put you on the spot just a second?
Absolutely.
What percentage, and, and to the best of your knowledge, I mean, of the, of the crimes we see, crimes we're reporting, what percentage of those crimes can you attribute to the, to the drug and homeless problem?
Well, I can tell you, I don't have a percentage I can give you without actually going down and order a report, an order to report for you. But most of the things we, we are seeing is, uh, cars being broken into, the Cadillac converters, that's, that's a huge one. And, and the only way we're gonna combat that is if state legislation is able to do something like they did with the, um, you know, the cop being stolen years ago. But, uh, you know, we're still seeing, you know, we, we've heard from other, we're still seeing needles underground and, and, uh, drug personality. And we are aware of the Blue House on Truesdale, and I will tell you that we are watching it. We just don't wanna be hasty and go in there and, and do something one time. We wanna build a pattern of drug activity with these people before we can do anything with that so we have a good standing in court to have a good case against these people.
That, that, part of the reason for my asking, when I read through the, uh, the grand jury indictments in the news journal, I'm surprised at how many of the people that are indicted have at large addresses on it. And that tells me that they're, you know, that's, that's the people that, uh, Mr. Stewie's talking about. A while back, we tried to pull together all the social service agencies to try and coordinate their efforts. And we had some success with that coordination initially, but it's been probably a year and a half, two years ago since we did that. I, I heard by, by the way they create by, that the, uh, the homeless group that, that was started some time ago is planning some sort of a public hearing and meeting to try and find out what's going on and how to address it. But, but if this is a two-pronged problem, well, there's lots of problems. Otherwise, it's cities like Los Angeles, San Francisco, wouldn't have a problem. But we don't wanna get to that point, so how do we address that? It appears to me that, and a while back, I think Mike Snar and, uh, and, uh, Lee Sandlin and Councilman McKay and I met with Lee down there and we brought up at that time, part of the problem with, with, with Sugar Tree and some of the other places is that there's, we just don't see any accountability for these people. Everybody for feed a homeless person that, that, that needs it.
Bring it back to the churches.
Yes.
Well, now, what I'm understanding is that the churches are now starting to feel this too, and the same people are coming in. So what happens is, we foment this culture of homelessness and giving away without reforming anything or getting, getting a handle on, so.
Go on, tell them before they eat, start eating, yeah.
Actually, there's.
There's another aspect to this, though. A lot of the people that we, I, I watched, I watched these things. Trespassing charges, are we, you know, there's, this, this is a three-pronged thing. Chief can charge, if his people can do it, but then what do the prosecutors do and what do those courts do with those people? Or do they slap them on the wrist so they can go right back and go through it again? We're kind of at a handicap right now because we don't have a permanent municipal court judge. We're gonna have a series of visiting judges probably up until February.
It is the room in jail, come on. It is the room in jail.
It is room in jail.
Just remember, thieves are always one step ahead of us. I know that sounds really bad, but they all have all these cell phones and they're going to the library. I was there, they're going to the library, chief, I'll tell you this, they're, they're, they're communicating.
And I, I, I have to agree with, uh, Councilman Evelyn here is the accountability. And we had a situation a couple of weeks ago, I was away on vacation, where we had arrested, arrested a subject over on A Street and the subject had a needle in his pocket. He says, you can't arrest me for that thing, I'm not gonna go to jail for that, it's not a arrestable offense, you can't, can't put us in jail for that. So it's, once again, it's accountability. I, we can, as far as law enforcement goes, I will charge somebody all day, every day for an ordinance or, or a crime. Once again, it's accountability, when they leave our hands, go to the jail, what happens after that? I wish I had more weight on that, but I don't.
But don't you think people get tired? If we set a standard where we're resting, I know it sounds good, but you guys have an ordinance that says that we can't ride a bicycle on the sidewalk, okay? So let's just start hammering down, people are eventually gonna get tired. I mean, yes, they're, they know they're gonna be released an hour later, but that's an hour out of their life. That's another, you know, so if we, we, we gotta be a burden to these people that, hey, obey the law or get out of town.
I, I agree with you, but the thing is, would that only be a minor misdemeanor? A minor misdemeanor is not a jailable offense.
You know, I, I'm, I'm.
Is the jail still following COVID capacity? Because there was an order, there was an order standing from Kramer's, from, between Kramer and Doughtery not to put anybody in a jail.
That's what it looked like.
Has been, because there was twenty empty beds in jail this morning, so.
There's one?
There was twenty empty beds in the jail.
And I caught two trespassing today.
Today, they were have fifty-one beds today.
Yes.
Put up trespassing signs and then they can get up.
No, this, the building had trespassing signs on it and the cops let them go.
When it comes to trespassing, once again, if, if you have signs on there, okay? They have to be advised verbally or by signage or by fencing. The biggest thing is if somebody says, well, they're trespassing, that's hearsay in court. Judges want more than that, and I, I explained to, to, uh, them that what we want, if you can get video cameras, cell phone.
I did. He wasn't walking out of the building. He was, he was coming out of the building and I didn't get it quick enough. So I saw him, and actually, he's not the one, there were two other people living in this house.
I think we could go on with this quite a long time, so, you know, we, I think we need to cut off this discussion and take it forward in some other form, I'm not sure what yet, but Michael might help with part of that. So, I was, did you jump in here, head of this gun?
I understand, Mr. Phil first. All right. No, are you, are you on the same topic?
No.
No, he's.
You go ahead. You're not on the same topic that we've been talking about?
No.
No. Okay, go ahead.
He's gonna yield to you. Could you give us your name and address?
Uh, my name is Bush Peel.
Try to keep it to three minutes. I know it'll be hard.
I'm gonna leave the restroom, I'll be back.
He's a former member of the, in the old building.
Two oh one Lovey Lane, Wilmington, Ohio, that's my address.
Um, two zero one Lovey Lane, Wilmington, Ohio, is my address. I give Jane Johns a tremendous amount of credit and courage to do what she has to do. I'm not sure there's anyone in this room that would camouflage themselves and made that they were a vagrant and attended their umbrellas, their tents along the walking paths. There's no one that I know in this room that would have had that courage. And she has not only done that, but she's been working on this diligently for the last sixteen, twelve months. Now, they're not all here, but there's a lot of anger. And there's a lot of hurt. And there's a lot of people scared in the city. Now, you're right. Thirty-five years ago, or forty, or how many were running? I did serve on this illustrious body for two terms. Wilmington has grown and changed a lot since then. I don't hear anything being proactive. I remember the first night that I went to a city council meeting as a city councilman, scared to death. But there had been two people killed out on Romback Avenue because there was not one light. No lights. It's nineteen seventy-three, most of them weren't even born. And so I said, being a young novice, thinking that everything would happen overnight, I said, "We need to put a light out on Romback Avenue so nobody else gets killed." And the engineer at that time, Bob Holmes, said, "We'll take that under advisement. We'll give that some study." I said, "Really? You're gonna take it under advisement and you're gonna give it some study?" No. If there's not a light out there thirty days from now, I'm leaving the city council as a nobody council that does nothing except talk their mouths. And I left that meeting and walked out the door, my very first meeting. So Bob Holmes called me about a week later, I went up to say, and he said, "You seem like you were pretty determined." I said, "Bob, two people getting killed, two ladies, seventy years old, they got killed because they tried to pull out into traffic. No damn light." "Well, we just can't put one out there." I said, "Why not?" "Well, we'd have to go to Middle Lane." I said, "Go to Middle Lane." Thirty days later, there was a light out there. I don't see this body being that damn proactive. I hear a lot of people saying, "Gee, we'll talk about it." Now, we know that when Rachel Ray came in and when all heck was breaking loose in Wilmington, and that was a difficult time for most of us because businesses were going, that was a ten thousand job loss, right, out of DHL, Gary? Is that about right? And so we had about three or four years that John Standforth and the rest of us that were in business were struggling. It was a terrible time. But during that period of time, people began to come in. And Rachel Ray, on her two or three television shows over the last three years, has said publicly on her TV shows, "If you want a good meal and a good night's sleep, go to Wilmington, Ohio." So, I'm not a cheat, I'm not near that spark, but I know damn well, if I picked up someone for any kind of crime, riding a bike or whatever it is, I wouldn't just say, "Oh gee, I'll slap you on the finger." I'd put that sucker in jail and let him sit there. And you put enough of these guys in jail and they'll catch on, the Wilmington, Ohio isn't the Hilton Head that they thought it was. I love all you guys. I have no issues other than we have people that are sixties and seventies that are locking and securing their doors at night that didn't do that ten years ago. They're scared.
Thank you.
Absolutely right.
All right, sir, you're up.
All right. Here we go.
Your name and address.
My name is Darryl, I'm from Corksall, Ohio.
Last name?
Etria.
Thank you.
Okay. I know the first thing we did in this meeting, we all stated, decided to pledge allegiance. And at the end of that, it says, "In liberty and justice for all." And we truly mean that. Now, my sole purpose of being here tonight is to advocate for justice. And that specific person would be Casey Pitzer and her family. And to formally summarize the facts of this, in two thousand thirteen, Casey Pitzer was said to have drowned, yet, or she was said to have drowned in the pond by Walmart. Yet when she was found, she was holding on to a clump of grass in her right hand and a loose string of beads in her left hand. Loose string of beads in her left hand, just dangled from three of her fingers. Casey Pitzer, she drowned, but in her left hand, she had a string of beads that dangled from three of her fingers. In her right hand, she had a clump of grass, okay? She drowned, but she had two things holding her palm. Now, I physically tried this and it is impossible. The beads will not stay in your hands, they will fall off every single time, it's impossible. And if I was trying to defend for my life and fight for my life, I'd know it would have fell off. So, did she drown? No. Okay, now, the suspects, let me summarize. The suspects failed their lie detector test even though the family was told by Detective Riley that they passed with following colors. After the failed polygraph test, the biological evidence, the clothes she was wearing was burnt and destroyed. The felonious crimes committed during the investigation have been unaddressed to this day. No one seems to wanna address that, and it needs to be addressed. The grass she was holding on to, the clothes she was wearing, the rope in the milk crate that was found four point three away from her body was never logged down as evidence. Her clothes, the grass, but they, but yet the investigators were throwing drag hooks and found a piece of grass on a hook and sent it off to the forensic labs. Well, they'll hold it just a piece of grass.
Sir, could I ask how that affects this council? I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Because the case has been reopened.
And you've already used your three minutes.
Are you kidding me? Sir, this is, to spoke for ten minutes.
I'll give you another minute.
Yeah, the piece of grass was found on the drag hook. Just to incur here, I don't know if that two thirty-one, if that's on.
Cause it sounds like you're going into a great discussion here that.
I'm just, I'm just requesting. So no follow-up interviews wherever conducted with the suspects after failing the lie detector test. Investigators in the case lied to the Pitzers and have left them holding on to unanswered questions for going on ten years. Recently, a WPD officer, lawyer officers, former officers on the record have stated that the evidence was destroyed before the conclusion of the investigation, which is a felony according to the ORC Section two ninety-three-three dot eight-two.
Once again, this is, we're not trying to case here at council.
Well, I'm not, I'm just stating the facts, I just wanna formally address this that everyone knows. No entry point was ever located where she ever went into the pond, even after the pond was pumped down eight feet. The lead detective and former chief were later deemed corrupt to investigate the case in the two thousand nineteen sex scandal. Chief Ron Cravens made a bunch of promises before he resigned to the Pitzer family and he left his family holding on to the same unanswered questions they've been holding for ten years. Today, we received news that the investigation has been reopened, but oddly, it was stated that was to a minimal extent. To a minimal extent? I also wanted to mention that we have thirty-two hundred people have signed a petition seeking the same answers that I do and the Pitzer family. I am here on behalf of the Pitzer family to formally request a full investigation to the maximum extent. We request that the city address the missing evidence. We also request that the polygraphs be re-administers to the investigators that were responsible for destruction of evidence and those who were involved in the investigation, the box investigation. There was a couple. We request everything to be conducted and a new investigation be recorded, documented, and a hundred percent transparent to the Pitzer family and the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Let me ask this Pitzer question.
Yes.
You say the investigation's been reopened by whom?
BCI, back in April, was asked to look at it again. They sent a letter to both myself and Andrew McCord, prosecutor, saying that they reviewed it, they declined to reopen the case, and they gave us suggestions as far as what we can do on our end just to tie up a couple loose ends. Those are actually been taken care of this week, and we are in the process of taking care of the suggestions per BCI's letter. If somebody's daughter was killed here and the people she was last seen with, they have a polygraph, would you just want to end it? Would you be happy with what this management had to handle? Two of them failed consecutively.
Anyone else have comments for council tonight? No, I'd ask for.
Just imagine it being your daughter.
I actually do.
Okay.
Andrea had reminded me, under the judiciary portion of council tonight, we were, we had had two public hearings regarding some rezoning of properties. We were meant to have first reading on this tonight, and we just dropped the ball and didn't get them on, so. There will be free readings scheduled for the next, I just wanted to put it out there so that there will be time in the next two weeks if you had entertained any questions or had any thoughts about it, you wanted to bring it to the next meeting, I wanted to put it on the news.
I did kinda wonder about that.
It was meant to be there, you know, I'll do better next time.
All right, well, it's been a really interesting meeting. Thank you all for coming and talking with us about things that are on your mind. May we have a motion, please?
A motion, your turn.
Thank you.